That is all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this the, is this the minimum signage that you, that we could get by with? Or this is what you're recommending? Or?
Correct. This is, this would be the minimum signage that would be needed. Speed sign on all the roadways that run through cities within the city. Um, every entrance point, half of the St. Highway and half of the County Road.
And then, just another question. There was some, um, question. We previously talked about this in your option three. It does say, under this option, the city can have varying speed limits along different roadways under their jurisdiction. And Main Street along railroad tracks was one of them that was sort of questionable, whether or not we could alter the speed limit there. Does this now include us being able to change things there?
That is correct.
Good for now.
Great. Thanks, John.
I have a couple of questions. The, the map of where the signs are.
Yep.
Doesn't extend far enough to see an exit top of Osprey?
To the south there, on the south side?
So I just want to make sure that's clear.
That is concluded.
So that everyone on the council did. I asked Adam about it and he said, yes, there is going to be one there.
Yep.
Um, and then there's also what appeared to me to be an extra one in Inspiration. We have one at each entrance to Inspiration, but there's that extra one on Inspiration Parkway South. And Adam said that's usual, which came up on the speed study as well. But just wanted to point that out and maybe have you explain whether, is that necessary? That far, that close to the other one that's right at the entrance?
And that one would be for westbound traffic on the other side of the road. So the first one that would be placed there would be for eastbound. So as you're entering the neighborhood, and that one would be for the westbound, I believe.
Oh, okay. So they're speeding right there as they're coming to the exit?
Just, just west of the main entrance point.
Yeah, okay. That is kind of a, it seems so close to the exit that I would think they'd be slowing down by then, but okay. Maybe push it back a little bit. Um, I also, is, oh, maybe that's more when you get into the other, when we actually talk about, you're, you're going to show us more of the, like, actual speed study that you did?
Why don't you go ahead?
Um, there's that one page where it shows all the different speeds that you tracked on the different streets.
Yep. I don't have that. I don't have it right now, but I can answer any questions on that.
There were two speed tracking points on Fifth Street, but not on Sixth Street North. And I just want to know, like, maybe it was one of them was supposed to be Sixth Street?
Um, currently, S H is evaluating the intersection of Fifth Avenue, our Fifth Street and First Avenue. So there's one speed location there that was set in accordance with that intersection evaluation. So we got included on that map.
Okay, so that's the one where we had accidents in the past, right, at T-Bone?
Correct, yep.
But I'm talking about just speeders on Sixth Street North near Fifth Avenue, I guess. Like, the county road.
Yep.
They're all the way south. It seemed like we have, I know we have some stop signs on the road. Sometimes people speed through because they don't have stop signs on the crossroads. Do we track anything there?
We don't. And that is something that we can definitely collect speed on, for sure.
I mean, I don't know if it would affect our decision or not, just wanted to clarify because it seemed like there was two of them.
Yes, there is.
On each other.
One was associated with this, that was with the intersection of, so we just put them all.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Um, let me see if I can. Any other questions more about the intersection signature? Thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor.
As far as to the, some of the questions. Um, so with changes to the speed limit, staff does expect there to be some changes to the actual intersection traffic. Um, so we, we didn't, there still is work to be done as far as the potential stop signs at certain intersections. So those are still being looked at. Um, but we do expect there to be a change to the traffic patterns, the traffic. The intersections themselves may have a change based on just the speed change. So we're doing it separately as opposed to all at one time. Being various changes. So that comes from answering the questions. So we talked about it a little bit. Um, I did talk to the engineers about that and the, the list of intersections with, well, Mr. Jorgensen did answer the questions, why they were too close.
All right. So we'll circle back to, uh, pinpointed intersections that may be potential signage. Did you have a question?
I did have a question. I know we originally talked, but if we go to 25, we don't have to do the signs. Is that still a thing? Or do you have to put signs up no matter what speed we go to?
Um, you would have to put up the signs for 25 on the residential areas where changes from.
Because that was in the discussion. It was, we thought that maybe it was 25, you didn't have to put the signs.
So, so the ways generally are primarily residential neighborhoods. So you would still have some 30 mile an hour streets in the city, so you would need to sign 25.
Okay.
Do you happen to have the study with you that you can bring up on your, on the laptop?
Sort of, the line's, I was going to ask you, nowhere near what we have in terms of 30 mile an hour signage, right? This, I mean, in ter-
I, I have the study. Good project study.
I'm just talking right now, 95 saying 30. And assumes everything's 30, so we have to put up signs as they enter each street, which is a lot. The other thing I'm curious about is all of our alleys are actually 10 miles an hour. Is that just something that everyone should know? We don't have to sign all the alleys? Okay, good. So, yeah.
I think that for everyone here, that 10 miles an hour in alleys is a state law. Just amplifying our comment.
Yeah, I just didn't know. So we don't have to sign for that if we're changing other speed limits?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I was kind of hoping that we would have the full study to be able to share on screen. Um, but I have a few, I have a few questions. Um, in the principles section, which is in section two, um, the study, and this study was, um, in the summary, it says, it's a, a task report provides the engineering analysis needed so the city of Bayport may select a speed limit that they feel is appropriate for their city roadways. I was kind of hoping, instead of just, you know, here's information. Um, but, you know, it does quote that the city council's desire is to change the speed limit citywide. And then they go on to talk about goals and guiding principles were established regarding the speed limits. And the first part is in the principles, the partner where feasible with neighboring cities to maximize, that we should partner, if we're going to consider this, we should partner with feasible, where feasible, with neighboring cities to maximize consistency in new speed limits. Um, and I saw that the examples that were cited in the analysis are Minneapolis, who has a population of 420,000, plus their visitors and commuters. St. Paul with a population of 304,000. St. Louis Park with a population of 48,000. And Adina with a population of 51,000. Now, those are urban or almost urban sites. We have very little in common with those, except for that we have people who drive and people who walk. So then, I'm wondering where the information is or what we did to talk to Oak Park Heights, Stillwater, Lake Elmo, Lakeland, because those are our neighbors.
Sure.
Any, any information with those? And I, I just, is it, may I ask my questions?
Yep.
So do you have any of that information?
Uh, we do not, no. But that is something that we can definitely-
I have some information and I'm almost certain, I was going to try and pull it up quick, that Lake Sanctuary Beach, didn't you, didn't S H do the speed study for Lake Sanctuary Beach?
So one-
And they went to 20 miles an hour.
One, one-
And there's other small towns that are trying to find them.
Stillwater is, is looking to move to lowering speed limits within the city as well. I know that. Um, talking to some of the council members right there, so.
I mean, I have 20 miles per hour as well.
And some of them in these larger populated cities went through mixed, not everybody, not everything is 20.
More streets do than we do.
They do. So if I could continue. They have the, in section 3.2.2, it has in the manual on uniform traffic devices. Um, they have the state agency that should conduct engineering studies to reevaluate non-stationary speed limits on sections of their roadways. Undergo significant changes since last review. I don't think we ever had original reports. But, um, I'm just wondering, did you document any changes that were significant to driveways? Um, you know, different parking situations? Uh, in the last five, 10, 20 years, did anything significantly change? That was one of the factors to look at as far as making a recommendation to lower speed limits? And I don't think that we have that in-
Other than, other than Inspiration?
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then, um, you know, we have the speed distribution of free from streets, the information file, we have the crash data that we evaluated. But in that crash data, it says that none of the crashes that exist that were documented on city streets were, where speed was a, uh, an excessive speed was a contributing factor. So we are saying we have the potential for these accidents. We've taken five years of data, but we don't have anything that's happened that can be attributed to excessive speeding. So just wanted to share that. I thought it was interesting. Um, and so we have one location of the five that's in Inspiration where we, um, an average was, you know, over 30 miles, it was 31 miles an hour. All other average speeds were less than 30 miles an hour, the data points that we collected. So, you know, I'm very much a safety 95. I fully supported us putting in the pressures and doing what we could. I think the new safety measures that were put by the elementary school are excellent and I commend staff for working with department and school for implementing those. I think they're paying off for us. I, I'm still struggling to see where there is justification and supporting documentation to say that there should be any change from 30 to anything lower. So where in the study would I find that this is going to be make Bayport a safer community? Except for that, if people drive slower, there's people, you know, that are safer, which we could say that people walk or, but that that would be the case as well. And I don't think we're going to outlaw it hard. So where in your study does it support this will make Bayport safer?
I can answer that. Largely, the study looks at national guidance, which says, and national guidance is really built upon protecting the multiple roadway users, which is less than pedestrians. And really, lower speeds means less of a, I would say, it's less severe crashes. That's really what the guidance was on a nationwide, on a national basis. So that lowers speeds really help reduce the area of those crashes.
So then, if we, if the intent of the council is, and it, it seems to be pretty consistent because we've talked about this on multiple occasions, to lower this to 20 probably. Uh, that will take enforcement. So I'm just wondering, has the city staff and police department, um, addressed how that will take place? And how with our current understaffed police, um, team, are we going to address? And I was wondering maybe if Chief Eastman could, would you want to comment or Adam?
Um, I'll, for the chief of the enforcement, uh, but there will be a period of when the change happens, educating, uh, the public involved, including the, the stopping, uh, the stopping of vehicles. Um, but as the, both the engineers report the study, both our city, our police chief have acknowledged that enforcement is critical for the city's success. Um, so there will be, we will.
I covered some of those. Thank you very much for indulging my own ideas. So, Mayor, I answered one of the questions or done one of the things you said.
Sure.
Um, you mentioned there were access that did happen on our city streets. They did not involve excessive speeding.
I'm just putting out the report that none of the crashes were on our city streets. List excessive speed as a contributing factor.
Yeah, I read the report. Remember, I just couldn't remember the exact wording. But I think what we have to keep in mind is that what excessive speed has been in the past is anything over 30 miles an hour. So to me, that is, even 30 miles an hour is an excessive speed on those streets. So I think that has to be taken with that context. You know, we haven't already changed the speed limits, so people are driving, as you saw, in the mid twenties to thirties on some of those streets, like Inspiration Parkway and some of the other streets. So I just feel like that's an unfair assessment of that because it is excessive still. You know what I mean? So there's no reason to change the speed limit.
I'm saying the information that we have that's documented doesn't support that.
It reflects a speed limit at 30 when they say not excessive.
Respect your opinion and your observations and, um, and of course, your, your comments. So, thank you.
We already voted to reduce the speed limit to 20. So I'm sure I'm here prepared to read the whole arguments again. Because I thought we'd already voted on that.
Well, that's kind of another point is that we've gone ahead and paid for a study to tell us something that people wanted to hear.
That's what research is.
So that's, I just want to let you understand that that was the investment and the intent to prepare documents for the desires.
No, I'm going to come back with a conclusion. It makes sense for this to be, that's why the report says what it says.
I think that's unfair.
Yeah, I think it's unfair too.
S H, Mayor, that's, that's sort of uncalled for, in my opinion. Um, to, to say that they, there was a foregone conclusion for them to come to these results is, is not fair to S H and, and that's what you insinuated.
Well, I'm still not, I'm, I understand.
All right. So you talked for quite a while.
That's fine.
So, that's not, you're not changing my opinion, but you talked because I, I don't think it was a foregone conclusion. Um, in terms of the neighboring city, I, I can see when it's situation from White Bear to Maplewood to St. Paul, where you're changing the street. When you're in Bayport, you know when to leave Bayport, you know when there's water. To me, it's pretty darn clear when you leave Bayport, enter Stillwater, leave Bayport, enter the next closest municipality, major municipality. So maybe, maybe that's not what the intent is, that portion of the consistency between neighborhoods. The thing for me is this graph, stopping distance versus vehicle speeds. Miles an hour, 200 feet approximately, 20 miles an hour, 125 feet, that's almost half. But 200 feet is a significant distance for our travel from 30 stop versus 20 approximately 125 feet start. And in terms of enforcement, it, the number shouldn't matter. If it's five, 10, 15, 20, 55, the number is the number. Either you pull somebody over for exceeding the speed limit or you don't pull them over for exceeding the speed limit. It, it shouldn't be enforced more when it's 20 than it is when it's 30. So that shouldn't be any more strain on our police department, in my opinion.
I, and I, I do appreciate that you didn't show that we had people driving over 30 on average, except for in the Inspiration neighborhood. So it will, it will take an increase, at least initially. So until people get into it.
The whole point of it is we don't want people driving 30. So yeah, if they're driving 28, 29, that's too fast. We want it lower. That's the whole point of it. So yeah, the data shows that, but that's, yeah.
John, I just want to reinforce because I think you're very relevant about the city. Going from a city, because you have a city street in Bayport and go directly to a city street of another town. All of our streets are kind of defined in order to get to the city or get on the highway or county road. So I don't think we need to worry about what other jurisdictions are doing around us because there's no transition until the next. I think that's what I was saying. That's the point. You have to get down the highway or county road to get to another city.
I just, I mean, we purchased an additional, I spent some time recently fixing up and, and it's a busier part of town in a, in a, in a wide avenue. And it's something I need to talk to the chief about. The speeds a lot are excessive. I've got, there was a U V or A T D, some sort of vehicle, um, chowing down there. It's first time north, which was down to the station, so a busier street. Um, I see it with eyes every day. People try too fast for residential. It's just, it's as clear as it was on my face.
Thank you. Anything else?
I don't want to just, no? No, I guess everybody, um, just kind of stated, I guess I felt like we, um, I guess I agree with certain things, being like I was expecting. But I do agree that St. Avenue is a bad one. So it's a sensible avenue. Um, I guess if we ever signed it, it was 25 or 20, that was way bad. Cost, I thought, well, we didn't have to do any changes at 25. How I was thinking it originally.
I think we didn't have to do this.
Okay, but I thought we had left time to talk. I just thought that was-
I thought we could have done 80, 90, 100, we were, we had to do a games on every street and watch it either end of the road. Was there a wow sort of thing? I just want to apologize to S H. If, and if you feel like you didn't do a very thorough report, I read several other cities' reports that you guys didn't do. And this is very much on par with what has been presented to other cities as well. So don't feel like you didn't do what we asked you to do because this was, is what needs, needs to be done in order to do the changes. So it, there was nothing. I actually could have probably put this report, I read so many other reports and I had all this information put together, but, oh yeah, I've seen all, I've seen all this. You did, everybody else has done in other cities. Maybe our expectations weren't set because we not everyone had read other cities' reports, but I kind of, we were going to-
All right. Bottom line, my decision-making typically is revolved around a little bit more substantial data, but that I do understand and I appreciate the effort. I appreciate the discussion very much, as always. So with that, Adam, do you have anything?
Madam Mayor, I was just going to say that some of the process, um, the, it's council, I received a couple of questions of, I thought the, the council already approved the 20 miles an hour. Um, some of the, the council was not able to, you know, formally approve the 20 mile per hour change until the study was done. So the back in May, when the S H was authorized to do the study, um, the next step is to come back and accept the study and then whatever change the council wants to make. Um, the intent was, I just went back to the minutes of that authorization. And it was 20 miles per hour. So that was the intent. Um, but the council should formally now, after the study's been completed, it has its informed, and it can make that policy decision where it wants to be. So.
All right. Well done. With that, to the council, there's two possible motions, wanting to approve the speed limit study results. And the second would be to, um, potentially change the speed limit into a different amount. So let's start. Is everyone ready to move on to the next? Okay, let's start.
I'm going to approve the study results as prepared and present to S H.
Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And, uh, do we get a roll call, do we?
Voice.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, opposed? I approve the results. Hmm, do I, Adam, do I agree with?
This is, um, no, it would be accepting the report.
Just accepting that they prepared a report and we received it. Okay, then, yes, aye. So all in favor, aye. So the motion, um, would you like to make that?
I'm going to approve the speed limit change to 20 miles per hour on applicable city streets, but I think it's all-
It would be all municipal streets.
All city streets in Bayport and all the rest to implement required efforts accordingly.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I oppose. All right. Well, that concludes that topic and staff will move back direction to the next step and we'll also look at some of the intersections that might be suggested here. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So then you are moving down execution to the easement with Anderson Corporation to provide access and parking to the Clean Water and Legacy Project site. So Adam, would you?
This, this item is, what was formerly known as the Landwater Legacy Conservation Properties that the city purchased a couple of years ago. Um, and I've pulled up the concept map, um, that's included as part of the easement. Um, just to give the public a kind of a quick status update of where we're at. Um, when the city purchased the property, uh, there was a timeline that the city had to provide access to the public. Um, that access has, we, but as part of that, uh, because the land was essentially landlocked other than some private driveway easements, um, through parking areas, the, the city was interested in getting a better long-term, uh, access. And so in our discussions with Anderson Windows, the, they offered to provide an easement through their, was referred to as the landing strip. It's, uh, off of Central Avenue, um, down by Lakeside Park. Uh, half of that would be granted to the city, um, and allow the city to get, uh, much easier access. It would eliminate, uh, some security issues, the mixing of public-private, um, traffic and get us to where we, uh, would like to be or potentially in the future, put a, move the boat launch, uh, from Fourth Avenue, uh, the public boat ramp down onto the property. Um, as a result of giving up that parking area for the access easement, uh, it was discussed and negotiated to provide a future parking expansion, um, if necessary. And so that, uh, that, it's not a one-for-one square footage. Um, it is smaller than what is being, uh, granted by Anderson to the city. Um, but the, the easements, there, there are two easements. So one is the city granting the, uh, future parking expansion up in the top of the map, that concept map. And then the other is the Anderson granting to the city, uh, permanent easement, uh, for the access lanes. Um, and there will be, uh, additional parking there, vehicle parking. Uh, we don't anticipate public, uh, boat parking on that access strip. Um, it's 66 feet wide as, we'll go to the next. Here's just a map of the two actual easements. And as you can see on, zoom in a little, there's also a temporary, uh, easement area that, uh, that's for construction. As part of the, uh, future plans, um, if vehicle traffic does need to go onto the property, uh, to access the boat ramp, um, the road, uh, should be lowered a couple feet. Um, so there will be a better match to grades from the conservation property and the landing strip. Um, and so this, uh, that next phase would include kind of lowering that by a little bit. And, uh, Mr. Prodey can, if you have any questions about that specifically, he can comment on that. Um, but that, so that's, this does include a temporary construction easement, which is that north, uh, this little box here. But the permanent easement will just involve, uh, this section.
So Adam, I'm, just so I'm clear, this easement that we're doing now, is it just pedestrians can get in there or there's no car access?
Not onto the property. You'll be able to have a vehicle and there are, there is going to be, uh, parking right near the access. But not oversimplify, but the security fence will move north, um, to where this, uh, to the north end of the easement area. And the fence line that Anderson was working from the conservation property, there was a 100-foot section of the fence removed and a gallop path has been installed. So you can drive up to the end of the landing strip that easement covers. And there will- And there will be parking there, I believe, which will be painted this, this week, uh, as the plan, um, dedicated parking up there and.
So it's paved, it's not the gravel thing that people can park on?
No, it, it'll be paved. It's part of the landing strip. So the landing strip is, the easement area is sixty-six feet wide. It allows a parking, uh, essentially a parking lane that currently includes parallel, or not parallel, um, angle parking. Um, it's current angle parking, uh, we were going to put. Um, mostly designed. The parking near, near the entrance onto the property.
And I can walk onto the property.
Correct. Right at this time, I, because there was quite a substantial elevation change, kind of a ditch from landing strip parking here, asphalt parking down onto the property. So that has been improved just with some gravel, some gravel. It's improved for pedestrian traffic at this point, is the minimum of what we had to provide access. Um, the deadline for the public council's, uh, collection, it's October seventeenth. Um, so we are up at that, at that stage. Um, we were granted an extension, uh, because of COVID, um, but that, uh, we are at the, at the time, uh, so we are getting in.
So they moved the security fence that they moved is the one that used to run right on like central?
Correct.
Going into the park, there was.
So they'll still have the western half of the landing strip that will have the gate, gate, east gate.
The gate.
Can we possibly put the diagram back up?
Yeah.
People on the public can see what we're talking about? And maybe you could point this out specifically.
So previously there were, there were two, uh, security gates, one for the southbound traffic, which is on the west and the northbound traffic on the right, um, on the east. That there was, this section of fencing was removed and reinstalled, um, to the north. Where, um, that, where the Anderson parking, that's not part of the easement will restart. Um, all right, it's currently there, but the, all the easement area now will have, uh, security vehicle barriers in between, um, the two lanes. And so we get, we get, Anderson is granting the whole eastern half of the entire landing strip, uh, which is, comes out to sixty-six feet wide. Um, so it will include parking right near the entrance to the property, um, the pedestrian path for the temporary access and, um.
So is it one way?
Two lanes.
So then how do you leave?
No, there will be, it'll accommodate two lane traffic.
It does, okay.
Yes.
So it's two lane traffic plus parking in that half of that landing strip, okay, just I can't remember how wide it was though. That picture with the, you know, this, this cartoony kind of drawing doesn't make it look like it's wide enough.
No, and that's not perfectly to scale. Um, we did calculate, um, using some of these, uh, diagrams, uh, some of the images, uh, to calculate the. Uh, roughly, and I'm, I'm somewhat approximate, uh, but the, under the conservation easement, uh, the city was granted or afforded forty-five thousand square feet for the public boat parking, um, area. And the portion that the, uh, that's been granted, eastern, that's been to Anderson for the parking expansion, um, for future, uh, potential parking expansion. Uh, it's probably twenty-four thousand, I believe it was. And, uh, it's about thirty-six thousand for the, uh, current access easement. So the, the, I think the current boat parking that the city releases from Anderson is about thirteen thousand square feet, including the driveline to access the spaces. Um, so the, the total, all eleven acres, um, just under five hundred thousand, uh, square feet. And the rating about just about five percent to Anderson for the parking.
We're not currently giving up. Or access to the current dock or the parking.
That is not part of this.
Okay.
Um, there, one thing, that's a good question, Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, there is a vacation of the private driveway. Um, the former resident had a private driveway through the parking lot, um, that will be vacated, uh, within ninety days, um, from the approval of the, of the easements. And, uh, trading for the permanent.
Is that on the north end of our property that you have the easement for the driveway?
Correct, yeah, if you look on, I don't have it, um, an image here, but if you look on the, the map, there's, on the Washington County property records, you can see the, kind of the track, there's a curved section. It's, it's, uh, it, it would not be ideal for, um, any type of public use.
So where do we get a walk?
So that, the city's not giving up any, any other type of access, um, to the property at this time. It does not involve the Fourth Avenue, um, public launch access, that still will retain, remain a public street until it's changed.
And I think it's interesting that we should, because I was unclear about how all that worked, but, so we are actually, um, giving Anderson twenty-four thousand square feet of parking on the north end. And they're giving us thirty-five thousand square feet of their landing strip, kind of?
Give or give or change some feet, correct.
Kind of getting a little bit, just so that's clear that we're not getting a, the short end of the stick on that.
No, no, say that.
They got, they feel like they're comfortable with the amount of parking that they're getting on that north end.
It's based on, on the, on the agreements that we've, we've been negotiating.
And we currently only have about thirteen thousand square feet that they're letting us use that, and we're not giving that up yet, but that's being used right now for the boat launch.
Correct.
But we can have a total of thirty-five thousand square feet for that kind of parking?
Forty-five. On the, on the actual property, uh, the conservation easement, uh, permits four, up to forty-five thousand square feet.
And we have to count twenty-four thousand too, or not?
No, that, it's a separate, uh, separate section.
That's the part I didn't get, okay.
Correct? That's what the language that I.
You don't know all that yet, okay, but it sounds like it's going to be plenty.
There were two separate sections in the conservation easement. And it, as, as I, when I explained that number, further parking section was about five thousand total. So it is a smaller portion.
It is, so that's really, actually, because I was very nervous about, because it looks like you could park like ten cars on the little parking lot they've drawn on there.
Correct, it's, it's about, it'll be about three times as large as the space that we currently use. Um, and the, when, we haven't got to that design stage.
Right.
So, uh, that, obviously the, the goal would be to maximize the usage, I'll see, um, with the, whatever improvement we do make.
I just didn't want to end up making a deal now that later could have, so I appreciate you sending me all those numbers and clarifying it and going over it with everybody. So everybody understands. Like a few steps behind on all this because he wasn't here for his. So thank you for clarifying.
So I'm not sure I caught, I understood that on the north side of the property that was purchased by the city, Anderson will have access to twenty-four thousand square feet there. Um, and in turn, the city has thirty-five thousand access to the property inside the parking. And it's open, it will be open for pedestrians. But not understanding is the second part that you're discussing, is you currently have about thirteen thousand square feet, um, of parking, the current, uh, parking situation. And you're saying how to be, what, um, how much is on the, this high level plan that we currently have for parking in the new property plan?
Forty-five thousand, um, is what the council submitted, the, um, the proposed boat parking.
And what is the overall square footage of the entire?
About, about four hundred and seventy-seven thousand square feet, according to my, using four hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Okay. That, that's helpful because otherwise it sounds like it's, you know, just parking lot.
And the thirteen.
It's a lot bigger than you think it is, that property.
The thirteen thousand, uh, square feet that we're currently leasing from Anderson, that, there's only about seven thousand of it that's actual trips, the drive, the lane that I lumped it in there because this is a, you just have parking that you can't get to. So, um, that in mind as we said, that you need to look at the boats and, and, um, it'll, it all has to be, I was trying to make sure it was as conservative as possible. Including, um, the last three times the amount of space, um, based on the current scenario.
Okay, that's much more clear, thank you.
Um, so when Bayport grants Anderson, or if Bayport chooses to grant Anderson that little triangular slice. Are, are we locking in on that's going to be parking and nothing else can happen there? Or is it just?
The easement is all, um, permits, uh, it's for parking expansion. Anderson's not able to, uh, do any type, other type of improvement, other than, it would have to be, um, you know, approved by the city. As far as the range of conservation, uh, you said, uh, they wouldn't be able to build anything there other than parking expansion.
There's also currently a fence there, is that something that we know Anderson wants to continue? Is that the city's responsibility or is there?
It would be the city's responsibility, uh, for, um, it would still be ours, uh, as long as they have access to that. Um, so it would be part of the, part of the, the conversation that would take place where they actually make that. Um, they still go through the whole permitting process, they'll be planning and reviewing everything. Um, but the, the maintenance will be on Anderson, so they'll have to plow that area. Um, the moving of the fence would be on Anderson, they'd have to, uh, move that, um, if that's what they, if they want to put in a new fence to control access, um, that would be on them.
And that would only be at a time, a future time if they were to start leveraging that?
Correct, there's no, uh, there's no current plan in place, uh, to break ground or start that project.
Okay.
And then, you know, based on, um, you know, this concept drawing, the kind of the cartoonish one, it, it is a nice drawing, but, um, it's, it seems like Anderson's idea would possibly be to sort of intermingle some of their property with land and water legacy property, right? I don't know if that's changed or if we've heard anything else from them.
No, no specifics on what type of improvements, they, um, it, it was, they were going to add additional green space, uh, to, uh, the, the, the current parking area. Um, it's something that we've gone back and forth with Anderson over all of their, you know, they, a lot of, uh, asphalt coverage, impervious coverage. Um, so it's been working with them to try to improve, um, which also, if they want to make improvements in that area, uh, they, that would potentially restrict their parking availability even more so. So we, we, as part of the rationale behind working with them, uh, in addition to needing the better access. We, they haven't, uh, given us any plans specifically over what type of improvements they would want to make, um, on their property, where the current boat parking is. The, uh, one of the things that, part of the conversations was they did view it as a benefit to have the, the walking trails, the access to the conservation property for, for their public users. Um, which is something that we, you know, we, we, we value that for, for all of our.
Employees walk to Lakeside from Anderson right now, so this would be a kind of a natural connection. Um, is there something that kind of was where I was going with my question that, you know, I know where Anderson is on their, um, impervious coverage? Is there something we could or should include right now? With this easement saying that, you know, they're agreeing to, because we're giving up green space in Bayport to potentially have more impervious coverage? I don't know.
I think that when we get to the review, I think that's probably the most appropriate. I don't know how general, um, without some type of more specific, uh, you know, narrowing, it's, because that's something that staff is always, always improving, always trying to, uh, improve, increase. Um, Sarah, did you have any other suggestions as to? That, that would be, I think that would be the time to really emphasize that, you know, try to maximize that, John.
Can I just add something to that?
Yes.
So if, uh, Anderson, Mayor, members of the council, if Anderson were to come with a proposal to expand this parking area into the easement that we're talking about now, your, your ordinance would apply there and trigger the need for some stormwater treatment under that scenario. So, uh, Councilmember Doll, I don't know if that gets partly at your question, so, um, and under certain circumstances, that application would also need to go to the WMO. Um, so I think you would have that covered in your ordinance now without adding additional language to the easement necessarily. And Leo, can I add to that?
Yeah, we just tend to, I'm not taking it ignore, because we've debated it previously, but we, and, and I'm not saying that we've done the wrong thing, that we, we seem to sort of give in. And, and I, I understand this project wouldn't be happening without Anderson, um, but I just, just throwing it out there as if there was something we need to do on the front side of it. If it's not in this council, it means it's, it's vigilant about things like that. This is, uh, I think we are.
Just thought of another question, is there anything we have to do to ensure, because I know we do it annually, have a contract with them to use those twenty spots for trailer parking right now? Could they next year say, eh, we don't want to give those to you? I mean, is, now that they know we have this new land, I mean, I, they've never been that kind of partner, but I just, is there something we need to do to make sure that we don't lose that before we get anything else?
I, I can't predict the future, um, as, as, you know.
That's why I want.
We do have, Fourth Avenue is a city street. And part of the understanding is that the city doesn't allow parking on Fourth Avenue for the boat parking. Anderson's allowed us to get off. So that, I think, I don't know if that would cover that, um, but the, uh, with the act, with the easement, if this is approved, um, we would also have, uh, you know, that, uh, secondary. We would, if we were to lose that boat trailer parking that we currently lease, then we would have to find another, uh, avenue. The, I don't think that the easement would really have any impact on, on that one way or the other. Um, that it really doesn't change the easement. Um, the, part of the easement and the, remember, understanding we have with Anderson is to work towards relocating the, um, that was, it, it was made clear that was their long-term goal was to, you know, separate the private and part, private and public, uh, interaction. I don't, the city would have to find another, another option for that.
Okay. So. That, that sounds clear enough, thank you.
And we have, we have documented milestones that we have to hit on this project or in the default with the county, which then triggers all kinds of penalties and, and reimbursement to the county if we don't hit our dates. So we really have to approve this by at least October seventeenth of some kind of agreement.
That would be the best.
Madam Mayor, can I add something? Um, so I think it's to keep in mind, this is a negotiated agreement, which is a little different than some of your, um, like condition use permits or any permits that you put conditions on. So, um, that discussion, although good to have those thoughts and thinking about that, then that would be actually a recommended change to a negotiated agreement, then that would have to be reconsidered by the other party. So, um, this is a little different than putting, being able to put conditions on a land use regulation, so.
That is helpful, thank you.
All right. Was there any evaluation, I, any evaluation at all of, of property value? I know that we, we made a purchase and any, and help us with that purchase cost, but I just want to make sure that, I mean, it's, it's like a very significant increase in square footage that this is, you know, adding eleven thousand square feet net of this agreement's, um, transition.
But we're also going to end up losing all square footage where we park right now, the trailers.
Exactly. I was just wondering if in this, um, this agreement and this negotiation, you know, was there any value assigned to these that we knew what we were, what we had paid for and what we're giving up?
No, uh, not, not in that, not in a dollar, um, sense. One of the, one of the items that we, uh, actually came across this, um, this last year, twenty twenty, uh, the, the parking area that we, we, uh, by Lakeside Park, the, the larger, not the one by the beach. not the one by the beach. Because we actually leased that to Anderson for money, the city has to pay taxes on it. Where the rest of our property, we don't pay taxes. So we learned that keeping Anderson already pays, you know, any property that we would lease from a private business, they're already paying taxes on that. But it loses that, basically that tax exempt status. So we, we, we do want to be careful that we don't start having Anderson pay the city for part of this. With the two easements kind of offsetting each other, trading off, that isn't necessarily triggered the same way. But the, similar, also similar to the, any potential street vacation, we're not able to charge for that. The property owner, the underlying fee simple property owner essentially gets their property back. So we're not able to charge them to get back. It has to be in the benefit or any benefit for the city to do that. So that, that's a future discussion, but if the council recalls a couple of the street vacations that we've dealt with, that question was asked. Can we, you know, this has, obviously has a value to the applicant. He's not able to, to charge the underlying property owner.
So did that answer my question of was the value of the 24,000 plus the 13,000 that we're going to end up? It looks like the city will end up forfeiting access to if it's, does that equate the value that we're gathering, gaining from the 35,000?
A monetary value is not, not calculated.
How would you do that? How would you monetarily decide how much it's?
Well, the same way that other properties are assessed, I would imagine, but I, this. Which I, I don't, I don't have that information. Go ahead, Matt.
Matt, Mayor, are you asking whether, so with this easement, Anderson still owns that property where we have the easement over? So they still have to pay taxes on that. So there's no real loss.
Okay.
They are from.
So they own that and we own, the city owns that section of the park.
Yes, right. So we will actually come over that. Take over Fourth Avenue with that even more property that we would be getting back to now, which is conceivable to be taxed on in the future. At an industrial rate.
And this agreement is for how long?
This is a permanent easement.
Permanent, ever, forever.
So.
Any other questions?
Just along the lines, the reason that the city sell the portion that we had to grant an easement as opposed to selling it is because we're not able to divest any of the, any portion of the property. We're not able to sell any of it, but we can grant an easement for the, for use. And Anderson did have interest in selling the land. We weren't looking to purchase it anyways. So this is kind of in the parameters of the scenario.
And what would happen if Anderson, and let's hope this never happens, but what happened, would happen if Anderson were to sell?
This easement would run with the land. So regardless of who the property owners, they could sell it tomorrow or the day after this is approved to another party and this easement would continue with it.
Thank you.
But the use.
Okay. Am I missing asking any pertinent questions?
You're asking very good questions.
But am I missing any? Because this is.
Well, I don't know what your goal is.
My goal is, my goal is to protect the city and its investors. We covered everything that we should.
Some of the people that put this together were thinking about the city too.
Asking if there's anything that we haven't discussed.
I think that the important thing is to remember that they're, so they run with the land. And they get to use, and so that, that part of the easement for that. So just to keep that in mind. And it's, they're, they're in charge of maintenance. Your question about the fence here is they have the right to put a fence on there. They haven't started it or they don't have a plan. That is included in there for security there. And then on the flip side, you have the use of, of, of the other part of the property, the public, for the public. So it's not, so the difference, notice the difference is that their, their use is exclusive. So that's what the word is. And the use that the city easement is exclusive, so this can be publicly used, is what you plan on this area about. So.
And anything that we're seeing as far as the, on the drawing, the paintings and all of that, it's just, that's not. It's a concept, so it has not been added funds at this point.
No, this, this is kind of the. Of this phase, the access. The next phase that we discussed regarding our council goals and some of the workshops that we need to have now, is that next phase to decide what, how do we want to do this? We are just, we are the questions that may need to be asked. The city is limited somewhat to the concept. We don't have to put the boat parking in. If we don't put the boat, move the boat launch, then we can have vehicle parking there. But we're, we're authorized to put in 45,000 square feet of parking. Otherwise, and we are able to move the boat launch. We, walking trails, have a restroom, shelter, big thing, shelter. But we're, we're limited under the, the, both the inner grant and the conservation as to what the potential use can be. It has to be a conservation purpose. That, that was the whole purpose of getting funding for this was. So we, but within that concept, there are details that we can tweak.
So maybe, and it's been a long time since we discussed this, but along those lines, was talked about early on, that, that it's sort of going to be a passive use park. I mean, we're, it's not going to get a ball field or soccer field or tennis courts, or it's going to be natural area with the trucks and maybe a big shelter.
Right, that's. That would be one of the things to talk about. What, that, it's a use that can be added to the, 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 the.
Okay.
And we're getting it done on time. Thank you, Sarah.
All right. Well, is there, there is, is there a motion or any kind of action that we need to take with this avenue now that we moved it down?
It would be to approve the easements with Anderson windows, subject to, no, as normal, subject to any minor changes with, you know, within the.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the execution of the easement with Anderson Corporation to provide public access and parking for the Clean Water Land and Legacy Project site.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Connie. And since this.
Because it's legal document.
Please go ahead then.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Mayor Sanores.
Aye.
Ayesall.
All right. Thank you very much and thanks for answering my questions. We do not have any new business that takes us to City Council to report. We've been meeting very frequently, but those down the line, if anyone's had any.
Um, no WMO meeting to report about my new liaison position on. What's the? Inspiration stewardship, Katie. Excuse me. We met, maybe this is coming on your, your, too, but we met weeks ago and just met up here and reached ourselves. Trying to find a direction to, to start moving that forward. We elected President, Vice President, Juror, Secretary. And we have, you know, we have to do these things, but the main thing right now is to sort of organize the group and get our focus. So I don't have any real specifics.
Do you know how frequently you're going to meet?
No. Uh, well, right now, I think, did we already have one planned? I remember looking at my calendar, Adam, but started to be on the spot.
No, we, we thought we'd meet within a month. We were going to speak to the city attorney. Discuss the actual legal information of the board of the foundation. And then we didn't want to, we want to make sure that there was enough time to do that. So once that happens, then we were, that was the next, the next meeting would be scheduled.
Okay.
Did our community representative attend the meeting?
Yeah, so it was myself, Adam, two inspiration residents, and Heath Heightcamp, Nate DeJarnay. I'm not exactly sure how you say his name, and Rob McManus. And it seemed like a good, everybody was eager, excited to get this going and people listened. About that property. More specific to we.
Thank you, John.
No, we'll meet in a pool because I don't really have a lot to, you know, Adam, we can mark with Sarah and Joey. We are at one o'clock, just. For explanation, I think Sarah goes with. I was up in Michigan during three days.
Three days was great.
That's why you didn't find them at Elliott.
Yeah, I was out of town.
Ethan?
Uh, we have not met since the last time, so I have nothing new to report.
Okay, great. And Michelle?
The planning commission hasn't met since we last talked either, but I did go to a couple of things that I just wanted to share some notes on. I did go to that Toast and Topics event that Stillwater, the Community Development Director for Stillwater spoke. His name, they have a new one. His name is Tim Gladhill. He just started a couple of months ago. And in that time, they have already, just like the week before that, I went there on September 14th to hear him speak. And they just established an EDA. So we had been talking about doing that ourselves, so I thought it was interesting to hear that Stillwater had just one themselves. They didn't have one before. Community development role is going to be slightly different for him going forward. He's kind of trying to focus more on kind of branding and marketing the town and maybe they might even start, they might start buying and selling property as a developer and the city itself. So just kind of a different role, looking at public financing for businesses, et cetera. And he's really doing a huge outreach right now to the Stillwater businesses, which is something I would like us to do. And we've talked about like maybe having a liaison or something where we have a new committee or something where we start talking about business. So they actually had, he's been doing some interviews already, so I mean, he's pretty new, but he had Smith and Mercantile, their business downtown. So we had them actually sit there up at a table and he kind of acted, he was doing his little interview, like he was doing a business. So he had to, we had to hear them say how they thought things were going in the city of the new business. And it was interesting to hear them say, you know, that communication isn't that great, like they wish the city would talk to the businesses more. You know, I'm thinking we can learn from this. So that's why I'm telling you all this stuff. I'd like to see, they jumped, he's a council member, they both talk to businesses and like she thought that's great to see the council evolve in the community. And that she likes that the business owners interact with other business owners. She suggested a quarterly newsletter that the city puts out just to businesses. I don't know if our city is big enough or something like that, but I thought that was an interesting tidbit. And then I guess there's some great resources on the Stillwater City website for businesses. And maybe we could look into what they have and if there's something we could do that would help ours. So just some interesting things I took away from that. And then just separate from what we might learn, they actually, well, maybe this could be helpful. They implemented a financial citation for city ordinance violations. You know, we've been talking about how do we deal with the fact that, you know, we have all these, you know, properties that aren't doing what we want them to do, et cetera. So, and they're actually looking into electric vehicle charging stations too. So I thought that was kind of interesting. So that was one meeting, a little bit longer than some of the short ones. I went to listen to, I don't know if you guys see Angie Hallam is a, like a water expert. And so she, I don't want her to title this, I should know this, but anyway, she spoke at Fields of Arbor Glen and I went to listen to what she had to say, just because I'm curious about that. And we obviously had some, you know, overuse of water this past summer and we've had some water issues. So she said that Woodbury, their water use hasn't increased despite all that growth that they've had in their area. So I feel like there's something we could learn from Woodbury based on. St. Croix River is quote, an impaired river because of all the phosphorus in it. She talked about that. I know we do the adopt a drain program, but you can go online and you can adopt a drain and, you know, clear it out. But they also have adopt a rain garder, rain garden program. And I'm not sure, I wasn't aware of that before I heard her speak, so that's something we could maybe look into. And then I talked to Matt and Adam about some other things that probably aren't going to fit for us, like retrofitting, you know, irrigation ponds and. So that, that was it. And then I actually intend to go to, is it, oh, there's a ribbon cutting for the Washington County, the new historical. Did you guys all get invited to that too? I just thought I should say I'm going just in case anyone else is going to be there because I'm going to have to. Three months or there or whatever.
I'm a member of the chamber board, so my attendance on different things would be assumed, but I'm not sure otherwise.
Okay, so it's the Washington County Heritage Center ribbon cutting on October 15th and they, they invited us specifically to have a Bayport version of it. So I was hoping that it wasn't just going to be me there, right? I mean, were you under, did you, did anyone read that email or were we understanding what that meant? Like, do you know what I mean?
They were, my understanding is that they were just hoping to have somebody, because it was the next year, 2022, is the 100 year anniversary of the naming of Bayport, that they were hoping to have somebody there at the grand opening.
Okay.
Ribbon cutting.
Okay, gotcha. So if I'm there, they, that might be enough.
I don't, yeah, I don't think they were having a special.
Okay, he made it sound different than that.
That was my understanding. I'd have to go back and look at it again.
Okay. My long-winded.
So you're going.
Update. I am, it's on my calendar unless something else comes up.
Okay. I know that we're continuing to try to schedule the multi-city fire meeting that has not yet been slated. And other than that, congratulations, VCA L on fabulous days, excellent event all around. A lot of work, a lot of coordination and executive activities. So thanks to everyone on the VCA. And over to you, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. September call volume was 69, 70, and 20 are your day. Call volume is 697 compared to 693 in 2020. Our monthly drills, our quarterly M R review, lateral pumping and fire inspections and plan reviews are ongoing. We've got new members from the fire department this month. Then the Washington County Fire Chiefs meeting, we had X month before three run September 11th, 2024. We're doing this, uh, football, and a carnival at home company and that was just a huge success. So. Fireworks standby for the 30 days and can't operate. That has one year service. Oh, September is our anniversary month for the fire department. We started in September 8th, 1888. So. This week is air prevention week and we are actually getting out into the community. We're going to do. We're going to do one, and we're pointing the fire truck next door to Andrew's window, and they're going to come out. So we're starting to engage the community, we're going to do fire prevention open this week, uh, the ninth. Uh, station from nine to eleven, I just, yeah. We're just kind of a low-key thing, so. Um, with that, I'll stand for, if anybody has anything.
Anderson Elementary.
Anderson, you know, it's, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Anderson Elementary, I'm listening to the trade-off, you're sorry, yeah.
They want you there. I would just like to thank you for your, um, hard work and investigation on different options on the upper track, and helping us out with the budget and reducing that initial cost, so thank you very much.
Yeah, that's going, progressing quite well. We can't do it, we're going to present our options and hopefully approval, maybe no further number, whatever. But Stillwater Flatter was in, so that was kind of a quick agreement for working against Stillwater. There's, it's been now for a couple of months, but we're providing backup for them. Cars supposed to provide backup.
Excellent, thank you for maintaining all those relationships and looking after the budgets, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Eastland.
Chief, Madam Mayor. Uh, nine, we have our weather, cold weather night shoot is mandatory to the polls. So, we're going to Oak Park, a person has a range, we have an agreement with Oak Park. We can utilize the indoor range there, shut the lights, and then the cold weather requires us to wear gloves and helmets, because they count impaired ability to take your weapons. So that's kind of interesting, and that was completed on the night, um, nine seventeen, eighteen, we reserved officers assisting at Derby. It was great time moving that weekend, and it's also a great weekend. First time, it was always, but I've always, the last few I've passed, so I apologize for the climate being that scalding. Um, and I just took care of reading reviews of all the fireworks and everything that's on, so I think it was very positive. We continue to assist with the new, um, routes with the car pool, it's working very well. Um, the library, um, three minimal complaints that we resolved. This intersection here on Fourth and Second has been a little challenging, I get up in the morning and afternoon whenever I'm here, which has been ninety percent of the time. We're working through some, tweaking some signs and what have you there, Matt, and I'm a bit worried with how things will advance. Appreciate that upcoming, um, mandatory weapons training for culture requirement that we're going to achieve. What happens is try to get them done early before they leave, because, because the mandatory chef sort of has to be there. So sometimes they're sick, or they're at training, or the department's full-time jobs don't get there, so. Try to push through before, um, end of the year. On our Facebook, you'll notice that we do a lot of community engagement, and we like to do that, but we also do, um, you know, release when we add the trees down, we talk about power. And so this is a resource, we, so the Derby Day is a good resource for you to, and if you have ideas, we're happy to comment it, email, that you think is important, because we certainly miss them critically. Our total cost per year date, as of my submission on the twenty-third, was six thousand two hundred forty-three, and I stand for questions.
Wow, that's, that's a tremendous amount of activity. Any questions from the council?
Happy belated birthday.
Oh, thanks.
It's my daughter's, it was my daughter's birthday weekend for Derby Days, so it was a party about her, and a party for you.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the, the community outreach that you do, and that you're sharing it with the community on Facebook, too, all the things that you guys do. I think that's great, and thank you and the officers for being there at Derby Days. It was, it was fun to have them there, I hope they enjoyed themselves. Oh, my gosh, the pet parade, it was, we had like thirty, thirty pets on display at the pet parade, it was a big niche, so.
All right, back to you, Adam.
Public Works Director Klein. Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as I'm sure a lot of you are aware of that, windstorm that came in through, uh, September seventeenth, so that's, uh, kept public works very busy. Uh, I'd just like to thank the department and a lot of the individual homeowners who, uh, had chainsaws out to help and clear some of the city streets. Um, we are still working through some of the, um, because North Hudson, Hudson, Austin, of course, um, trees, and then we did, I did a week or two before all the, um, stuff removed, um, and then we'll be writing some, um, with the ashtray removal that's going on siding with, um, this project. So it's, it's been a busy month in regards to that. Um, the projects, as I mentioned, and the ashtray removal, um, we see the D N R grant for one-to-one, every ashtray we cut down to plant that, that we do different species of tree, uh, that's going on currently. Um, we'll be taking down more and more of the trees this week. Next week, we'll be planting the ones, um, the homeowners, if they can, and why these trees that we're planting. We will try our best to give them, because it's finally dry, and they could use it between now and when it freezes. Um, other notes, um, the sixty-fourth and seventh year project will be starting very shortly. Like the deadline for, for some of it is over thirteen, or over thirty-four. Um, so they'll be expanding the road, making, um, curb gutter installation, and it should have road here. The other one that, um, to finish up is the water extension. Um, they've extended water all the way to development, um, and they're working in the development, specifically on water. Um, but they should be working on development with water portion here in the next month or two. I'm not sure if it's still effective, but elsewhere too in there, um, but it's still possible. That's all for now.
I also wanted to thank you for working with the folks. We, it had been brought to our attention that, uh, the Land Ducci, um, project, which has been going very nicely, the building, um, and then, um, progress on their, on their, uh, development. But also, there had been just a discrepancy in the number of trees and the height of the trees that had, in some instances, been planted that were not in compliance with what we had agreed to. So, um, that has been working as a liaison there for Land Ducci and homeowners to ensure that they know what's taking place and why, um, you know, some of the ashtrays are being removed and the processes for Land Ducci to, um, now that it's fall, and some of those other additional trees that, uh, needed to be added as compensation for having met the minimum, so.
And thank you enough to say what you put on, you guys have to do, and on the day of the storm, so it was, you got it all done, so thank you so much.
And back to you, Adam and Sarah.
Assistant Administrator Taylor.
Madam Mayor and council, a special election will be held on November second to vote on the Stillwater Area School District referendum. Um, we had a presentation last month on that from a representative of the school district. Um, early absentee voting began on September seventeenth and can be done by mail or in person at the Washington County Government Center, um, in Stillwater. The city will prepare for staff and conduct the election on behalf of the school district. Um, again, that will be on November second, but we will be reimbursed for all the related expenses for the election. And just a reminder that all residents follow fire station on Fifth Avenue North. Um, a vacant seat still exists on the planning commission, uh, is posted on the city's website. Residents interested can email me a letter of interest, um, and we are accepting those until a position's been filled. Uh, the Minnesota Land Trust completed their annual monitoring inspection of the conservation easement, the open space in prairie, um, in Inspiration on September seventeenth. A formal letter will be, um, from, will be sent from the Land Trust summarizing the observations. Um, that will be sent to the city, um, which in then will be turned, in turn be sent by the city to individual property owners and the homeowners in, uh, association with encroachment violations such as mowing into the prairie. Um, there was some composting going on, um, some minor footpath trails, those types of things. Um, so the city will work with then the homeowners and the homeowners association to correct those violations. Um, that'll be done this fall yet. Um, and then finally, the Allen S. King, Allen S. King Plant Advisory Panel, um, met on September fifteenth, and that meeting focused on environmental regulations and considerations that will pertain to the property when, um, Oak Park Heights is contemplating rezoning or redevelopment of the King Plant site. Um, presentations were given by Excel Energy on the history of the overall site, the National Park Service on the Wild and Scenic River designation that will apply, uh, the D N R on fishery habitat and how the discharge of the water at the plant right now may affect that fishery habitat in the future. Um, as well as Washington County on economic development and conservation opportunities for future use of the site. I stand for questions.
Any questions for Sarah? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, for my report tonight, a lot of it's already been talked about. Uh, one of the items, uh, that has, the, again, to reiterate, is the twenty-two preliminary budget. This is the twenty-seventh meeting, um, and it did include a six-point-six levy percent, or sorry, six-point-six percent levy increase and a twenty percent budget increase. But, um, if anybody hadn't seen the explanation already, uh, that was mostly due to the change in, kind of a change in accounting. Uh, some of our, uh, our auditors had recommended to staff to change some of the way that we had calculated or reflected items in our budget. Um, so the actual dollar increase for the median home in Bayport was only twelve dollars. Um, it's, it wasn't a twenty percent expenditure increase, it was just a reflection of expense being incurred by the city, um, but they were now reflected in the budget. Uh, so going forward, uh, it, it'll be less shocking, sticker shock, um, but I just want to make sure, to reiterate, uh, due to the increase in value, property values, and the, the expansion, the increase of the number of homes in Bayport, uh, due to the, the new construction, uh, we were able to accomplish the, the budget even with the, the six-point-six levy increase, um, with a very minimal tax dollar increase. Um, the, the number, or the median increase for the proposed school levy was, uh, twenty-nine dollars, I believe, or twenty-eight dollars. And then the, uh, the Washington County's, uh, was about a four-dollar increase over twenty-twenty. Um, but again, that came out to, uh, the upper twenties. So Bayport is well under the other taxing jurisdictions. Um, our tax rate did go down, uh, by two and a half percent. So if there's any other items, uh, this year that was new was the format of the budget materials. Um, and there were a couple items that needed to be corrected, uh, since the meeting, um, that we would, staff had to make, uh, but if, it will be available, is available on the website, so if anybody wants to take a look at that. Uh, again, the truth in taxation hearing, uh, that's the public's opportunity to come, uh, and, uh, speak to the council about the final budget number, uh, that will be at the regular December sixth meeting this year, um, at six o'clock. Uh, the other item, uh, that I've been working on that hasn't been addressed, uh, tonight, was labor negotiations are ongoing. Uh, we have one tentative agreement, one tentative agreement with the, uh, Police Officers Union. And I have a public works, uh, union meeting tomorrow morning at eight AM, and we hope to have all three, uh, done by the November meeting for the council to consider. So with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, and thank you for that summary of the budget. I think it's, um, and that was nice and clear on, on the impact, overall impact. I think it's, it puts some money away for, uh, saving to replenish some of the funds that we have used to make improvements to our parks, the cemetery, uh, adding, we're increasing force to, uh, make sure that our public works, police, and fire, um, funds are well financed for vehicles and associations become new. So, uh, I think it's, you know, planning for the future and to secure the public, uh, streets project, so. Planning for the future, making sure that we stay very financially sound, it's a top priority. I think we were able to accomplish that with very good planning, so thank you very much. It's a lot of work that you've been putting in, nights, weekends, um, et cetera, so thank you. All right, um, any other announcements or items from the council? If not, we'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Michelle, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John.